See now it's six o'clock, I'm gonna call over the village of Elville, Doran trustees meeting for Monday, July twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And whose living.
I would.
Which is hands.
One nation under God.
And the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Oh, please.
President service.
Here.
Trustee Spanan.
Yep.
Longgar.
Here.
Michael Crow.
Here.
Asmar.
Here.
Absent tonight and Zeigler.
Here.
You have a quorum.
What's the meeting posted?
It was posted as required by law.
We have public participation. So if you'd like to speak on any non-agenda or agenda item, you can do so now. Stay come to the podium, state your name and address and try to keep your comments to about three minutes, please.
I'll be first tonight. I'll wait till we get them. Okay. Uh, towel swimming.
Stand up here. Legal.
But.
Oh, um, I'm concerned with the sidewalk we're putting in, okay? From some of the neighbors that it's been pretty messy for the part. Crappy job. Sidewalk, five inches in front of one person's house, in front of another. The amount of uh. Safety factors there involved there with people trying to walk in and out of their own house, tripping on the sidewalk, that's five inches, try to through their own sidewalk. This seems ludicrous to me and I can't understand how this went through. These guys don't seem to know what they're doing. They told somebody this morning that they weren't allowed to cut through roots because they always told them they couldn't cut through roots of trees, so they ran sidewalks over top of the roots. Even to me, they know it's about putting in sidewalks. I don't quite understand. I've never seen anything like this. I've done a different municipality for twenty-five years and had sidewalks put in front of my house that were never any problem. And the amount of money that I'm being charged for this is unbelievable. Across the street, they got charged five hundred dollars six years ago, next to them, seven hundred dollars. They're charging me twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-eight for the. House next to you.
Hmm.
This is ludicrous, you're trying to allow for uh, for fifty percent. And that's crazy. I understand you guys had one single bidder who bid properly and so you took them. I mean, I get that. You don't have any other bidders. We have a road out there that's falling apart and nobody's fixing that. But the thing that you get to assess us on easement, you're gonna do that one anyway. My sidewalk had some parts where the grass would come up and have crumbled a bit, but they were fine sidewalk blocks. I've never had that kind of a sidewalk determined by the municipality I lived in to be bad enough to replace ever. And yet they pulled the whole thing, even though they told me they're only gonna do half of it by the paint lines that were on there. You're making the whole thing. Further down the block, on the other side of uh, a neighbor. There's another person who's got the exact same grass coming up through theirs, the same amount of space. They're determined not to need new sidewalk. It just doesn't seem to make any sense. Everything I see and hear about it makes no sense at all. So I would like to hear why that. Why we're with these people and why when somebody went to the village, they're told, well, it's their fault, it's the the sidewalk people or whatever. Sidewalk people saying, well, the village, well, we couldn't cut through the roots. So everybody's passing buck. Nobody seemed to be wanting to fix the problem. Problem with these folks where they've got five and a half inches. With both folks not being able to walk that great. And it just makes no sense to me. The Hiller branch place next door, I walked over there, there's two and a half inches. On their sidewalk. And then they get the sides. This is crazy. Why would they do that? Why would we then have to just deal with it ourselves? They said, well, we can grind that one down for Hiller branch. So what are they gonna do for his? And I gotta put, you know, what they need to do is put a new sidewalk from the existing sidewalk they just put to the stoop of this house. Otherwise, there's no way. It's gonna be full of water. Winter is gonna be icy again. It's all gonna come down there. None of this makes any sense. So somebody has to say, we're going to do something about this instead of saying. And obviously, it's everybody's clear. And this uh, they just did mine. They haven't put the cement in yet, but it's off too. Man, it's gonna have a bump too because I watched them do it. They got it rising up of the sidewalk. For no reason. Big trees in front of my house, they cut through the roots. So there's no reason for that to be happening whatsoever. Ask us up to Kazmars and that's fine. It's ice and level. There's no reason for it to be going up and they did it anyway. So they just don't seem to know what to say.
That's sure I'm well over three minutes, so I shut up, but I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Uh, folks, comment? Uh, I don't have anybody else signed up for public comment at this time.
If we can do a checkup on the quality of work being done out there. All right, we have the consent agenda. All right, it's consent agenda, considering.
We don't have anything on consent agenda tonight, so don't read.
So that's pretty good. You're done with that part?
I, the minutes will be on next several sets of that, all the minutes next time.
You have an update. Uh, we've been working with uh, the Fire and EMS district. We've had a couple of meetings and made some good progress with them. Uh, I believe we will have a uh, a new district agreement, uh, possibly in front of the board next month. One of the meetings, I can't guarantee it'll be the first meeting, but uh, it should happen next month. Making a lot of good progress there. That's what I have for president's report, staff reports.
Um, nomination papers for the trustee election are due by five P M tomorrow. Um, we have had one set come in so far, so at this point, if nobody, nobody else turns in papers, we will only need to hold the election on the nineteenth. And we won't need a second election, but we'll uh, I'll let you know. But that's all I have.
Oh, sure. Uh, the Elrip project on Fourth Street. They're gonna be moving in equipment on Wednesday. Small chance they start the end of this week, like on Friday, but more likely in the next week. I will simply say, I I can't address everything that was brought up there, but um, the five inches particularly. I'm gonna figure something out and and I hope you'll at least vouch for me that I've been out there.
Yeah, right.
Trying to work.
He's been out there twice. Just not right. Killer wait and have.
My two cents is just uh, a reminder in case it's something I forgot to tell you. Couldn't remember. Um. But the library board decided to pay off the C D A uh, amounts all in full, so instead of paying that over the next continuing eight years, we paid it off in full now. That would have been in April. It's not necessarily reflected on on the library budget yet, but just uh, double, making double sure. Thank you. How much was that? Hundred and eight thousand, one oh eight eight oh seven. Okay, thank you.
You know, the old business. Discuss considered ten project, ten number three projects.
It's been a while since we discussed the good projects, so figured that we need to bring it back up, especially during the budget season. Um, we amended the project last year to reflect uh, the projects that have been discussed and pull that out. Uh, all projects will be power eight seventeen of the report. Um. We talked about signage, admin services, uh, Bell West construction, uh, property acquisition, uh, ongoing finance costs, all of that. Board has already approved the property acquisition, uh, people forward, the Bell West Boulevard and all that. What I need conversation tonight is trail bridge project. Uh, as long as you guys are good with us moving forward with the trail. We can start doing that kind of stuff, getting task orders ready and all of that. Um. The bridge, I think we're putting up forward for a while, because it's about double what we had. But yes. Uh, really just wanted to get your guys to page on what direct, what direction would you like us to go in? Regarding the trail. If you're wanting us to move forward with a great, we can kind of get going with uh, when do we need to refound?
The reality, we probably need to do it as we were a regular borrowing, you know, later than, than November this year.
Oh yeah, I need to know, kind of get the cost estimates in and all that kind of stuff. Um, task order, engineering. I can't start that unless you guys give me permission, so. Yeah.
I'll say too, if you guys do decide you wanna do the bridge, uh, regardless of the the price tag, we would have to have three million or so come out of general obligation debt because the tits not be able to.
Reminder, the bridge was uh, proposed by, you know, U W Platteville students had given a presentation on that. It was to connect uh, the west side to the north side. Across the river, it was gonna be on pylons and a wood bridge. Uh. And yeah, we we had budgeted uh, for two point two five million dollars and it sounds like estimates are, you know, around five million, so. Kinda, kinda out of, out of where we we planned, so.
So without the bridge, will it still, will we still be able to?
We'll go do the trails and then we can always, we'll put the bridge probably where it would go, so then if we ever do build the bridge, then attach it to where it would go on the trail. So you can always do that.
You can have some kind of, kind of head, head there or, you know, lookout, lookouts. You know, I don't know what the, you know, whatever, whatever works there for the way the land's set up, so.
Are you looking for?
Um, motion would be fine as long as, yeah, that way you guys, I can move forward with the costs and all that.
Anybody have any uh, concerns about any of the other projects posted in here for ten three?
We've gone, bro.
Yes. All but approved, the the bridge was. Judy?
I just have a comment. I happened to run across the, all the costs we put into the bridge over here over the river for to get into community park, and that was in two thousand twelve, well over eight hundred thousand. So I'm going, yeah, it's twenty-four hundred years.
Can you see?
Um. Yeah, something.
Well, yeah. What other projects, what are we borrowing for?
Uh, we're putting a sign out, a welcome sign.
Where's that going?
Uh, number three.
Out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, property acquisition, the two point seven million for the two properties. Uh, the Bell West Boulevard construction. And stuff.
Any other comments from board members? Motion?
I make motion to proceed with the two three projects.
Second, what about the bridge?
Not including the bridge.
Yeah. Some question by Debbie. And as.
Kelly motion by Sally, Charlie.
Sorry, sorry. Debbie's name. Ah, put the X in the wrong spot. Second by Tony.
So is this just for the trail?
Yeah, you proved all the other.
Down the other.
Yeah, we already, yeah, that's.
Okay, so let me try to phrase that and make, to approve the trail.
If you want to specifically share, we could.
Let's do it that way.
Trail. I will, okay, we're gonna call that the proceed with the tip three trail projects. Not including the bridge is the, is the motion on the table.
Okay with that?
Yep.
All those in favor?
I.
opposed?
Just to clarify too, Connie, it's just, so we're like, we're not borrowing for all of that. It's all coming from to increment. So what we do borrow be paid back by the increment and then some of the incidentals like administrative costs and all kind of stuff, that just comes.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So come side about bridge.
Hey, I didn't understand. Now, it's new business, discuss and consider the Bell, Bellville Community Foundation.
So this is a uh, push up from the Finance and Governance Committee. I'm not asking to go through the bylaws line by line at this meeting. What I need from you guys is this a concept that you'd want us to consider moving forward and then the Finance Committee will work out the finer details, or is this something you really don't want? And then, there, we discussed this a while ago, so what about Bellville Foundation, what a community foundation does is the five oh one C three of a community and they do the fundraising that, you know, we can't as a village. And so what kind of made us think about this is we have nine and a half million dollars of park projects coming in the next few years and if we can get donations for that, that would be great. So the foundation will be the arm that will get those foundations. Foundations can do park projects, they could do rent assistance, they could do sidewalk assistance, they could do uh, food pantry, they can do kind of anything that we would want from them. Uh, and so some communities have them, some don't, some have specific purposes, like we could just start with parks and that is all they fundraise for. You can have other things, but the goal is to have a arm that we kind of control a little bit more to say, these are the things that we're trying to fundraise for, that way you don't have to pay tax levy for it. Because if we don't get donations, we're, we might, we hope probably for grants, but if we don't get all the grants that we want, like, it goes on the taxpayer. So, any donations that we can get. So these are the foundations that kind of do that. Uh, so what I need from you guys again is just, do you guys like this concept? Do you not? If you do, then Finance Committee can start kind of going more into it. The board's usually five to seven members. The village president to one trustee would be on. Staff would be me and Ian kind of helping assist day-to-day stuff, Ian more on the accounting stuff and that. Like Epic has donations that we could go for, New Garden Brewery has donations you can go for, all these different companies have. They give donations to parks and schools and so we would try to go after those.
And there, there is some, you know, setup and administrative costs involved with it, so.
Yeah, we would have to run the five oh one C three, make sure all the grants or make sure all the finding, funding goes through. We would probably have an audit for it and all. And we can look more into what the annual costs are if the board likes the concept.
Also gonna be precipitated on how successful it is. So if it's successful and we're spending more staff time administratively, obviously it's gonna be more expensive that nobody's doing it anymore. We did have a lengthy discussion of finance on this and recommendation was to forward it to the board, so.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the Bellville Community Foundation.
Second.
Yeah, the second of Debbie.
The Finance Committee will work through things, get the lawyers involved, how does it work, get all the funding, and then we'll present it one more time and you will approve the bylaws and all that kind of stuff once it's.
Some idea of the numbers involved to your setup and all that, so. You know, any other comments from the board? Public.
Does it have a quick question? Now, does this foundation become autonomous or answerable to the board or?
It's an autonomous organization, but the village board would have members on it and we staff help assist in it, but it is a separate, much like the Community Development Authority is separate of the village uh, impact and that's where you could set up foundations and for anything, or resident-driven, but again, that could go to anything. A community foundations generally are a specific point that the village wants to really work on. If that's utility assistance, if that's parks, if that's road, if sidewalks, whatever it is, it's usually a target of the governing body, this is the area that we really want to help offset. Some foundations do other things. That's just what community foundations do. So that's where this would kind of play in. Tighten both, but it's a five one C three separate, board is separate. Once the village board sets it up, then they're pretty much out of the day-to-day operations. They are.
Get a piggyback on. That brought up the question. So in other words, the projects are dictated by you guys.
Dictated by, the village board sets it up saying, hey, these are the projects that we care about. Parks, utility assistance, renters assistance, whatever that might be, and then the community foundation does that.
The work.
Does the work on behalf of the village to get that going and resident-driven and let's see, a certain foundation, if they create their own, caring just about murals. They could do that. That's no village, why they can do whatever they want with a mural. But this foundation would be set up for a specific purpose set out to do.
Be board-driven.
Well, the board is saying, these, this is why we need a foundation. This is what we wanted to accomplish. And then after that point, the just, the foundation board takes it from there. Arts, arts and culture.
I remember some of the conversations, is that when people donate the money, it has to go to a certain place where they tell it to go?
Yep, so just like any other foundation or five oh one C three nonprofit, if you say it's going to a mural, it's going to a mural. If you say it's going to a park, it's going to a park.
Segregated.
You could have a general, donate to whatever the highest and best need or whatever, Debbie had popped and say, go, you, your choice. Or you say, I want to go to parks or whatever. And that's where, you know, we can start, I can say on behalf of the village, hey, Epic, there's this park here. If we have a nonprofit set up, would you be willing to look at that or, you know?
Any board member comments before we go to vote? None? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Right. We discussed, consider terminating the Syntas contract.
So before it starts, this is a thing that's been on the radar of staff for a while now. We talked about it, Ian, I molded over at the last budget cycle and we pulled it and it's been a in and outs. Uh, we really decided to look at the next. Drew handled it and so Drew got his eyes on it and this program made the same decision that we had made and pulled the plug, so he's kind of got an idea of how he wants to proceed.
Yeah. Okay, so you've got attachments for the contract itself and then a brief summary that I made. If you read the contract itself, it's uh, very dense and not straightforward at all. They don't like to sum up their totals for what you're paying. They just itemize everything individually and uh, leave you to add it up with calculation. Anyway. Um, so if you take the numbers and and add them all up, there is slight variety, but we pay about sixty-six dollars a week for four operators for the clothing rentals. They give us the clothing and they wash them. So it's that weekly cycle. It's about sixteen fifty per operator per week. So that runs up to about eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year or just over thirty-four hundred dollars for the four operators I've got right now. The real problem of it is, is that uh, the public works operators generally speaking don't like it and don't use it. Uh, I've got one guy that absolutely does use it. Props to him. But generally speaking, don't like it, they don't want it, they don't use it. Um. So there, to terminate this contract, which was signed, I believe in two thousand twenty-four, there, there are fees for termination which are laid out now. There is a cost to it. But what I would suggest in replacing this, I think will save us money in the long run. Um. Simply by allowing a reimbursement annually to our guys for purchasing work pants with, you know, standard, standard restrictions of, you know, appearance and and type, whatever. The whole effects a year would probably cover them and then adding in shirts. Get around, did some searching, looking around for for shirts with logos and and uh, just, just to get you an idea of what I'm looking at, for all those shirts, streetwear for the guys, where it's all with the Bellville logo on it. And then even more for for less dangerous, that's still got our original colors on it. I mean, this really isn't the important part. This is about the termination of the contract, but just showing that we've got other other things that we can do. Price for what I figure uh, would be for 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 these guys for for shirts and pants, talking about four hundred and twenty dollars in the price house. Um, even if we added in maybe fall jackets or something along that line, which might be useful, or the guys want, didn't want to, they work in the super plants and stuff, they don't wash your stuff at home. So a washer and a dryer, it it's still gonna come out better for us in the long run. So that's what I'm asking for is the permission to terminate uh, this contract.
And we gave what's saying earlier, the washer and dryer, that was in the capital budget two years ago, but we, we were able to rework the agreement with Syntas in twenty-four and so that, we never acted on that, but it has been discussed and approved before.
Who does that still talk to? The laundry.
Both.
Well, a-again, I kind of tracked this incoming to public works first, but that's moot point, I guess. But yeah, so I'm looking at this, so they get five shirts. Um, yeah, it doesn't. Chris, what's the policy on the police department? If something gets wrecked in the line of duty, that go against their, um.
Village has to pay for that outside of the, you know.
Outside of the uniform allowance. So I'm thinking the same thing here. I think there's a lot of things that we need to talk, think about here first, like if they, you know, they're all in a water main leak and they tear a shirt, well, on the job or do anything for the job, they're all the cemetery, whatever they're doing, you know, I think that and so I think the four twenty is very much on the low side, because what's some uniform allowance for the P D and I realize we're not buying, you know, the clothes are different, but what is it?
Eighty fifty is what?
Seven fifty, okay. So. I think there's more to this than, because like I said, you've got winter jackets and, you know, that kind of stuff. Um.
Yeah, but if we're paying for a service we're not really using, we're just wasting money. And if they can put a washer and dryer in, I tell you, you can get one off Marketplace.
Yeah. You're right, the four twenty is, is, I mean, that's a minimal supply of stuff. I will say the, the winter jackets that they're using, those were not Syntas providing. Those are the village that bought that. Um. So that, that's already happening. So like I said, they're, the yearly, the yearly for Syntas is about eight hundred and fifty-eight per person. And my, my big issue is that they're just using that.
Well, then, so, and I think we need to be somewhere between that four twenty and that eight fifty, because again, if, you know, they get a, they get a uh, shoe allowance or a, you know, they get a boot allowance, right? One pair a year, they can buy it.
Something like that somewhere.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I, I think there's more to this than just saying we're gonna buy them five shirts and some pants, so.
Well, they need a couple backups.
Boy, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Pants aren't cheap. We know what the police.
So I, I don't believe any of that actually has to go through the board, doesn't it? The actual buy of shirts and pants for those.
No, just.
Well, if we're gonna change the policy, it's got, you can't go and start doing that until the board approves getting out of the Syntas.
Yes.
For her contractor, so I'm not against it, but I think there needs to be, except four twenty, I think is on the low side. By quite a bit.
I will say this too, once you start getting into public safety, as soon as you tack on public safety, this, public safety, that on any uniform allowance, then actually just jack up the prices. That's twenty-eight years, so.
Everything's gonna.
Where the stuff where public works is gonna buy is, you know, it's the same, similar, I would think, that you can buy it.
Comply and farm and fleet, that kind of stuff.
Usis pallys just have a, you have a pant allowance and then you literally just have a thousand shirts in the public work office and they grab a new shirt when they need it. Like, that's how most Usis pallys do it. That's all, just take it, let's go.
Well, that's not what's proposed.
I'm just saying, that's what a lot do, so. I think we're more concerned about the fact that are you, are you okay with the Syntas contract and then from that point, we can figure out a better way to do the, we just want to get out of this.
When does it run out?
It is five-year contract, I believe, so I have the twenty-four.
So pay out if we have to.
Right now?
About a letter.
Uh, twenty six.
Twenty-six hundred dollars.
Wait till April twenty-six. Wait till April of twenty six. It's about seventeen hundred sixteen. I didn't, I didn't tell. Push it out farther than that because we get to a point and then it's just a lot less provisioned contract.
Regardless, we're not losing it. I feel like we're just wasting that money. There you go. Even if we have to pay the twenty six hundred dollars to cancel the contract, we're done with it.
And I don't disagree, but we had need to have, except four twenty is low. I don't think that's the number, you know, we're not, I don't think those are the right numbers in there. So.
Even if we went up to, what did you say? It was per person, eight hundred and something?
Uh, the Sintas, eight hundred fifty eight.
Yeah, I mean, if they went up to eight hundred dollars, we're still saving money.
You've got the term.
Can't maintain it anymore. So it's just a small upfront cost. We need to take care of public works guys regardless.
But nobody is saying we don't, or we shouldn't.
I know. Sure.
Sorry, but no one's using the Sintos uniforms.
Only one person.
Only one person. And we signed the contract last year. Was anyone using it before we signed the contract?
Yeah, they did use it some more pants.
Stops using it.
We should have had turnover. We had a lot.
And then we changed a little bit, like they were a little like jailers. It was black and blue stripes. And then we made it more of a neon worker and they did. That wasn't, except they all wear it themselves. They just don't want to wear the one that they get.
Well, there has to be, again, there's going to be anti requirements as to what they wear. They have to be visible and all that kind of stuff. So. And do we, do they wear vests over the shirts now? Or is that how they do it when they're out and about on the street and stuff?
If they're out on the streets doing street work, yes, they wear the neon vest with the reflective tape.
I hope in the winter time be getting a long sleeve shirts.
He wouldn't fall, would get some of both.
My question is, if you rip them, do you have to fix it yourself or does this company fix?
Sintas.
They fix it.
They fix it.
Yes, they do.
I didn't deal with the same time for forty years.
And that's kind of silly because my husband had to wear them and and he gets something. But even a button come out, take it to get it cleaned, they put the button up, they fixed the rip. I mean.
But only one guy is using it.
I guess your other.
Then he, then whoever tells them, you will use it. I mean.
Your other option is to say it is mandatory, you have to. That is your other option, if you don't wish to remove the contract. It's always bad.
Say it again. I don't necessarily have an issue with getting out of the contract, but it needs to be a little more thought into what we're going to pay for and all that kind of stuff. How we're going to do this to, you know, to say we're just going to buy twenty five of each size of a shirt, you know, whatever. And again, I don't know, polos is the way to go or if it's just, I don't see many polos and in the look, I'll see our county highway guys every day in Green County. I don't see them wearing polo shirts or T-shirts and vests and stuff like that. So.
Could it be brought back to us for our first meeting in August?
Yeah, I guess my, would you feel comfortable saying you're fine theoretically removing Sintas as long as we can come up with a better solution on how to replace them?
I guess I'd rather see it first and then.
That's what I'm saying. Wait, we come up with a better, I guess, a different solution on how to replace it up with the financials all would differently worked out. Is that what you're asking, looking for?
Basically coming with a more complete solution.
Yeah, I'd rather see that than to cancel it all out first.
Well, Kenny's got a valid point, you know, if they're repairing stuff, who's going to repair their stuff?
Well, the original reason why we did the Sintos contract is they are using great. They are gray water, uh, solid wastewater materials and they shouldn't be required to do their own block. That is why, that's why the Sintos contrast exists in the first place is they work with just wastewater treatment plant. They get splashed back and wash that again. But since none of them, all but one are not wearing. It's clear that they don't care. So that was the original reason why sometimes existed is because they were going to reach our treatment.
Are they the only uniform people that we've talked to?
Right, once we got the contract.
You're the ones who had the contract by far the most in this area.
But if we're going to negate their contract, is there another one that we could look at? That's comparable to what their prices is. If they're going to wash and. I don't think we'll be in the same spot though. Only one guy is using it. It's pointless to spend that money unless you mandate it. I'm not going to mandate what they wear.
What we have. And you just mandate with what we have.
Right.
We wouldn't.
And the uniform, you have friends of you. I'd rather stand in the happy.
Yeah.
They did.
We got three options. Write the contract, come back with more information in in more detail or mandate that you use the Sintas.
Back with more information.
At least until the contract runs out. Seven hundred four years.
Yeah. Look at your price.
Their job, they're mandating what you wear.
I've never.
Sir.
Works banding what they wear unless.
It's pretty big, bigger city.
Like that's what I said, some municipalities said. I'm going to words, Epic, you're wearing these pants, you're wearing this shirt. We'll buy a million shirts, but this is what you're wearing. And when I worked in other municipalities in Wisconsin, uh, Wanache and College Grove, when I did, I helped them for a couple of times. They just gave me a neon shirt and said, you're out.
Yeah, it's it's pretty common.
It's, and you don't, they don't give you the option. You'll wear blue, whatever, if you can buy it.
Right.
But.
Right. They have to be blue and it has to be a certain color. I get it.
Places I've seen, other places I've worked at, they've had like a return like a quartermaster. And so like people have, you know, a stock of shirts and pants sometimes and, you know, one gets messed up, whatever.
Okay. It's not too versatile.
Remove and replace.
You don't worry about it. You do a pant reimbursement to serve them now and then you're. The shirts are just replaceable.
That's I think is a cost savings in the long run.
So what's the consensus on how we want to move forward with this? You want to table it till next meeting when they come back with with more detail on on costs? And what that would look like, you know, for for providing uniforms? We want to mandate that everyone just use Sintas till the end of contract? Or do we want to cancel a contract and go with what's proposed here?
I'll make a motion that we refer this to the public works properties and utilities committee to explore all those options and come back with a recommendation for the next meeting.
Second.
By Gary, seconded by Debbie. Send back to public works. Additional comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And discussions of resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen budget amendment to facilitate bulk water meter purchases.
Yes, um, so there is a resolution twenty five sixteen authorizing budget for the water meters. Now it's an increase in the budget of the water infrastructure capital of thirty one thousand dollars. It's like a big number. It's not actually, it's not actually anything we weren't already doing. It's just a change of operational procedures. This is for deduct meters. Um, when typically with deduct meters, we get them in onesy twosies, people come up and they fill out the forms, they get one installed. And they pay the deposit or the fee for it and we order deduct meters, we implement stock and install them. That's how their process works. Between the the fee, between the fee we collect and then the the small fee that's added on monthly water bill, we eventually get our money back. Now, uh, we've had developers now are just changing the way they do things. And now they're just installing the deduct meters immediately. So all this, this really isn't an additional purchase per se. This is just, we need now because they're killing them out eighty permits at a time.
How much is the?
The developers are doing.
What's the cost of a deduct?
Like what's the deduct?
What dominion does this get us?
I think that's eight.
Okay.
This is just, it's just because it crossed that financial threshold of the number that we're buying it.
Will we adopt a resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen?
I have a question. So if developers are, developers are already installing them.
Well, they started the process for it. They submitted the the person. They're just going to be installing them as they build the houses and do everything. So I mean, it this, this saves a lot of money on the, on the sewer built. They're, they're thudding the lawns and doing all that watering.
Sure.
So they're just going ahead.
But shouldn't that reduce the number that we would need to keep?
They have to get them.
Oh, they're hitting us. Okay, that was my question.
You go and pick them up at public.
Yeah. Get it from them.
I thought, I, well, I didn't know. I thought maybe they were, no, purchasing them themselves.
Oh, no, we've, we've had to purchase them and we.
Okay. Now, I agree. Okay.
I couldn't hear a thing you said here.
No, no, no. Eventually, yes. Cause I mean, if every house being built has one, then we're not going to keep as many as stock because there's not going to be as many people that need the map to the fact. So I mean, eventually, yeah, we'll have less.
But we'll need for all the new houses that are.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
As long as they keep on with this procedure. Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion by Gary, seconded by Deb for adopting the resolution. Additional comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. I can be discussing center ordinance twenty twenty five oh eight rezoning Bakers Woods P U D area to R S H residential, single family, high density district.
This is actually a really simple one. Um, so this is not all of Bakers Woods. It's only the twenty seven single family lots. They're originally zoned as a planned unit development to accommodate the smaller lot sizes that are now in our code allowable. Um, and actually exceed the the minimums for the the smallest lots we have. There was never a component of this where infrastructure wasn't going to be. Hand it over to us at some point, the village. So all the streets and all the infrastructure, everything's being built to spec. The only reason for the P U D originally is because the uh, single family, high density district had not gone through and been approved yet. And this was in anticipation of that. Since there is no uh, infrastructure that's going to stay private or anything like that, uh, there's no reason to jump through the extra hoops that a P U D comes with. Uh, and so it just hasn't per rezone to what is now in our zoning ordinance to allow for the the single family high densities. There's not a single line or measurement on the platform that's changing. It's simply the zoning district.
Just clean it up so it's easy to.
Onward member comments?
Is this the one at their condos?
No, no, that's not, not the same one. No, this is the, the, so this is actually right next door, right adjacent to that, but it's the new uh, Bakers Woods phase three, where they've got the the roads and everything out where the woods used to be like that.
Right. The P U V was used to shrink the lot sizes so that we had more park space available.
And that park space is not changing.
No, no, not, not, not single line.
Single lines change. It's just, this is just records keeping so that we're not tracking a P U D.
Yeah.
It's just standard zoning.
The hoops to jump through and most of those hoops have to do with making sure that the infrastructure and everything is built. You know, and and still, you know, to accept the public safety standards, a lot kind of stuff. If it's not being built to the goal spec, well, it is. So we don't, it's useless.
Thank you.
Just have a couple of questions. So with the, like, the street isn't as wide.
This one would be.
This one is standard.
You have every single, uh, every single bit of infrastructure, streets, curb and gutter, sidewalks, sewer, water, everything is is was to be dedicated to the village regardless. So the only reason that it was originally zone P U D was to allow for the lot sizes that were not then allowable in any other district.
So in other words, the size of the lot, is it the size that is on the high density ordinance that is identified yet?
They're all larger than the the six thousand minimum. I forget the exact one.
Okay.
Sounds like Gary was going to.
I'm moving that we approve ordinance twenty twenty five zero eight second.
I gotta get in there once in a while. Any other comments from board members? None, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Passes. Next item, E, discuss consider updating the comprehensive plan.
I wrote in a memo to kind of outline just the process and basics comprehensive planning for you guys that that didn't go through the process before twenty twenty one, when the last comprehensive plan was adopted. From, I wasn't around at that time either. It kind of outside looking in, it looks a lot like the W Q T pro project, like you made the best decision at the time with the information available, but a lot of information has changed since then. So it's the same thing to comprehensive plan. If you were to look through the comprehensive plan in twenty twenty one today, we've already accomplished an awful lot of things, a lot of things. It didn't make sense to begin with, like starting our own transportation authority. I don't know where the hell I came from, honestly. It's just weird. Um, that, and then, and then, you know, future land use, well, we're already currently expanding into all of the areas that were identified for future future land use map. And so we're kind of where we really need to update. We're going to start to have issues with our comprehensive plan. We're, we're within the ten year period allotted uh, by state statute. You have ten years of where you mandatorily have to update your comprehensive plan. You know, we're well within that, but still it's to the point now where it really should be updated just to kind of guide the community where it seems to be going. Or I guess where it wants to go, granted, out fast with travel.
Make that motion that we update comprehensive plan.
Second.
The big question for this for you guys is how you want it done. I I put in my memo, we, we have the capability as staff. I think we've got a really good group. You know, we have the capability and staff to do a really good job in-house. But it's going to take a lot of time. So you, you can, you can have it good, you can have it fast, you can have it cheap, but you can only have two.
So would we have to contract that out?
So there are components that you'd have to contract out regardless. Like we don't have the ability to create maps the same way that M S A does. So like when we do the future land use map or any of those other corridor maps, anything like that, um, we would have to contract with M S A or, you know, similar provider. I I put in there kind of a, a pros and cons. There are really good contractors out there, uh, contract planners out there that can help you walk you through the process, walk the community through the process and put together a great document. I find that more often than not, you get a bunch of cut and paste from other communities. And I've, I've actually found other communities names in the comprehensive plan. So I'm just I think we can do a really good job here. I just know that we've got an awful lot going on a step and we're kind of maxed. And so it, it, you know, it's.
My concern is M S A is so expensive.
Well, I think we would, we would go out for R P.
Okay.
And we would search for the better.
What was that, Gary?
Every firm is going to be expensive. I don't think what you do, you go.
Yeah. I just, we, I know that M S A.
I mean, if you guys, if you guys want to, want to go through with it, and it sounds, sounds like maybe you do. Um, maybe we, we say, okay, we're, we're going to go through it and then a staff, we go back and see like what pieces maybe we can pick apart and come up with the exact. Um, maybe we, we say, okay, we're, we're going to go through it and then a staff, we go back and see like what pieces maybe we can pick apart and come up with the exact spaces that we may need.
Can it be done in phases?
Yes. Yeah. Actually, like, there, there's nine basic components that have to be a part of this and like. I kind of put it in here that you break that down into three sections. So it's, you know, palatable for everybody. Um, and so you take three sections of that where there'd be like, um. Housing, transportation and economic development. And that would be the thing that you focus on for the first part, when you go through public hearings or, you know, Q and A sessions, town halls, that kind of stuff. Um, and surveys, because you want to get as much public input as you possibly can. Um, and then you move on to the next three and the last three, and throughout the way you're crafting the document. And then it gets back to the board, back and forth, and there it is. Uh, and so. I, I don't really know what it would look like if we were to, to. Contract out for part and not all. Uh, but I mean, that's something that we can definitely discuss.
Take a look. I have serious concern that being put on staff. I mean, that's a very, that's a very comprehensive. You know, unintended plan. And there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of. Demographics, information and stuff in there that is going to take hours to compile that kind of stuff.
Actually, that, that stuff's kind of easier.
Uh?
That's the, the demographics aren't too.
Well, that's, but I said, but transportation corridors and all the statistics from all that kind of stuff that goes in that plan. I. I mean, I'm for updating it because yeah, it, it's probably out of date already with the way we've grown, but you know. I mean, unless you guys want to take the time and look at the last. Uh, task order that, or when M S A did it and, you know, think, you know, look at what you could do and can't do out of that, but that. Except we don't have the capability to do all the maps and everything in there and, and, uh, um, so.
So base, put it down to the basics fundamentals for a minute. You all are good with updating the comprehensive plan. We're all in agreement that needs to be up.
Yeah.
Right? So then let us come back to you guys with what our recommendation is. Now that we know you, we have your permission to. Move forward, whether that's us drafting R F P, looking at what we can do, what we can't do, but I'm telling you right now, we can't do it.
Yeah.
Like, it's just not, even if in our, I think Ian's absolutely right. I think we would do a great job and I am very well, very concerned that some firms don't do as good of a job as we could do. But capacity wise.
What's up?
A good thing though is that we do have a lot of the ancillary plans that we can save across the school we just did. Yes, strategic planning, like the, the parks plans, that's a huge part of it. Like, so there are. Components that we've done separately that can be folded into this. Um, and that makes it a little easier, but yeah, I mean, it. It's a, it's a fair of a process, like. Us to be in two, to, to do it internally, like the, how busy we are now and say we get it done at the end of twenty twenty seven, I think is a stretch.
Okay, so I'm hearing that. There's, there's interest in redoing the comprehensive plan. You want to basically send it back to come, come with.
Come back to you guys.
What you guys feel is. Staff is capable of, of doing and where M S A or another contractor might be involved. Whether they're doing it all or not. Um, so. That doesn't require a motion. But we have a motion on the floor. To clear up.
It's been seconded, so.
Right.
Um.
Well, do we need to make the motion to, to move forward?
I think it said you wanted to move. I mean, it was, the, the motion was to.
I think the motion as it stands does what you want it to, which is basically directing staff to begin that updating process, which however. That means for us. So you could just go ahead and vote on that motion and I, I would be okay with that.
One, okay with that? Does that? With your intention, Deb?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone's good with that. All right. Any other comments before we can vote? All those in favor? Opposed? All right, discussing the term affordable housing.
Ian wrote this beautiful memo and we're not voting. There's no motion that's going to be made tonight in this area. But we've thrown out the word affordable housing. We've thrown out single family, high density, low density, medium density, or. A lot of fun trigger words and we've kind of like come up to. What do you guys think is affordable? What residents think is affordable housing? What is the term affordable? So Ian kind of wrote a memo, kind of just explaining a little bit more, this kind of having that conversation before. What are the expect, what are your expectations? So.
No, I think this feeds into the comprehensive plan discussion too, because housing is one of the big components of that. Um, and there's this affordable housing shortage, that just plain housing shortage in, in Dane County, angry. Um, I put links to, uh, both their most recent, uh. Housing strategies or housing plans in the, in the memo. So, uh, I forget exactly what the number is. It's thirty, thirty-five percent of the, the total income. Uh, if you're paying any more than that for total housing, then, uh, it is not affordable. Um, so I, I just gave basically out of what that, what that means here. So. The, uh, median household income in Dane County was a little over eighty-eight thousand dollars. The median household income in Green County was around eighty thousand. Uh, the median. Home sale price as of March in the village, uh, was four hundred and nineteen thousand. So based on the lowest median household income of eighty thousand in Green County, the most affordable home that someone making that could afford is two hundred and fifty thousand. So we're pretty far from affordable housing as a whole, based on the median data. We can do things through. Policy and ordinance, the zoning code specifically to make it easier, um, and make more, make housing more affordable. You're not going to make housing affordable with that alone, but. Um, I, I put it in my memo, um. Affordable housing on a single family lot in the village does not exist. And it's not going to exist anytime soon unless you add multiple dwelling units. That's the only way that would work, whether that's. Two family, three family, you know, two family with a, a mother-in-law, something like that, that might be the only way it could, it could, it could work. Um, I know the, the forty thousand dollar a year, what happens to the person making forty thousand dollar a year? So using the, the same definition from HUD, uh, of the, the percentage of take-home income, forty thousand dollars a year would buy you a hundred and twenty thousand dollar house. You can't get a one-bedroom condo anywhere in Dane County for that. So. That's for rep. Short of, uh, uh, higher density, multifamily, you know, having accessory. Dwelling structures as a right, like I said, with the mother-in-law suite or something like that. Um, that stuff will help, but I mean, short of straight subsidy, you're not, you're not getting there. Um, and I don't, I don't know if there's any. Appetite for that. I don't even know how that would work here. But yeah, I just, I want to start the conversation and see just where everybody's at, what they're thinking and have a clear understanding, because. It's, I, I, at a staff level, it's kind of frustrating to hear terms like thrown out and everything, and then we act contrary in certain situations to what, and. I just want to make sure I know what you guys want, what the plan commissioners want, especially when working on ordinance and when dealing with developers. And so. Again.
So when I think of affordable housing, I think multi-unit, like apartment complexes. Ideally. Tail on the bottom, but I know that's a stretch. But. You know, like. Twelve hundred to eighteen hundred dollars a month, I think. To me is affordable housing because that's what we pay for our mortgage. House is cheap. Have an old house. I, I can't afford a new house. I can't afford one of Petrie's houses, unfortunately. I think. I know a lot of people are always saying that Belleville doesn't have affordable housing. We don't even have any rentals. I mean, as soon as a rental comes open, it's gone. That's, that's where my thought process is with affordable housing is the multifamily. Be it duplex, be it fourplex, be it. Thirty-two unit. Just. Options. We need more options. Rather than just single family homes. You're out of. A lot of people's reach.
I mean, there, there is still a market for single family homes, no doubt, because there is a housing shortage, period. So, but, but affordable housing is, is kind of the, the larger help. Um, we obviously don't have any problem right now and would. But the affordable housing is a real issue. Uh, so the reason there aren't any rentals here is because the housing prices are so high that it doesn't make sense for landlords to come in, purchase or build. Uh, and, and, unless they're doing something. Single the guy out, but I think his places are awesome and his business model is awesome, but Brian Budenholz building the duplex. Cause he's building them, uh, and then he's, he's renting them out and, and every, like, he's able to keep his costs in line and. Do what he's got to do to make it, sure. But I mean, for somebody from the outside coming in. Purchasing, you know, a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar house and the most you're possibly going to get out of it's two thousand a month. That just don't make sense.
Right.
It just doesn't.
But I think the need for rentals is so high, it's actually poor people then. Don't want to commit to buying a home. I'm going to say in luxury apartments and I'm not saying low income. But I'm saying there's got to be something in the middle where a developer. Would want to take that because we're, we're supposed to get some apartments.
We're working on it.
Is that still?
They're just waiting for their financing.
Possibility.
Yeah. Yeah, they need financing, then they're moving. We've literally approved the addresses, like they are good to go. They just want to.
That's kind of where my thought process is, is to get.
Because you want more apartment type stuff. Obviously, we're doing single face, single family, that's happening. But duplexes.
Duplexes, apartments. These are really perplexing.
One, the ones at Cold Drive, I, I, we asked that, I think Connie asked that question when Dickie was in here. Those are not, those are not affordable. You know, I mean.
Twelve hundred dollars rent.
Affordable. Yeah.
It goes up to, I think it was eighteen hundreds.
It's better if it was eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
So that, that.
In a box.
Yeah. And I mean, I'm not talking low income. We're not even close to low income. Low income, the only low income we have, you know, in the village, uh, is, is maybe who is some, if there is anybody subsidizing section, I don't know, but. Um, the Dane County housing.
Yeah.
Out there.
Got a comment, sir?
In Madison, Dane County area, you got a lot of, uh. Apartments that go in because of the tiff grants that they get and, and because of the. Because of that, they have to have affordable within their accommodation. So they have to have so many affordable. Accommodations within that building. So you have to explore that whole end of it and then you'll have Gorman and everybody else jumping the bill. Get the money on it. But you have to. For the idea of what do you want? One hundred unit apartment buildings and.
Subsidized.
If it's low incomes, you're, you're totally right. Like, if you, if, if a low-income developer can find a, an active. Fifth to get cash that way, get the, the low-income, uh, tax credits on top of that. And then Jesus, if you're in a, a, what you call it. The, the opportunity zones on top of that, it's a hat trick. So, yeah, I mean, those, those work, uh, but we're, you know, the, the last apartments, uh, on Cold Drive that, that we were just talking about, those aren't low income or, or. Maybe, maybe affordable, but.
I agree.
But.
Their market, right?
Mm-hmm. That's what she told us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Their market.
And there's, you know, there's, there's a need for that stuff.
There's very much.
Absolutely. I think just rentals in general in the area, because we have so many people coming. So many people. I mean, when you think, I just, when I look at that area on the west side. We make sure apartments because it's just.
Do we know we have people coming from Epic? We have actually demographic, everyone says that.
Yeah.
But.
Actually, yeah, just about everybody adds that up there, works at Epic or.
So I, I can only speak like. By experience and not by everybody, but I do know that especially during U G M time, we, they have to carpool into. Um, to give the clients the parking spaces and there's definitely plenty of people from Belleville. I could probably list ten families right now that are epic. Um, that do it. So like, there's definitely, we moved to Belleville. For that reason, because it's the same drive that we, we had when we lived in Madison, but it's not Madison.
Right.
So. Yeah, actually, I do think you get a draw.
Yeah, so I don't, I. So apartments is one thing, so we can, we can. Work with apartments, but I mean, as far as like single family goes, I mean. Um, I know that the small lot sizes that it went through, but then there's, there, there's been a lot of whatever about that. Um, with single family like is, is an accessory. You know, accessory residential, uh, use. So a second unit on a single family lot by right, something that we want to do. So you don't have to come to plan commission to do anything. Um, you have the right on, on, you know, certain. To do accessory, okay?
Um.
Or multifamily by right in certain districts or anything like that. I, I'm just going through the.
So by right, they would not have to go through the planning commission?
I mean, they might have to go through the plan commissioner or site plan, but they definitely wouldn't have to have any.
They're going to ask permission to say we're doing this. They have to ask, does this big code, does it? But. By right means they have the ability to do it all our job is to ensure it's of conform.
No, I think it's just. The planning commission has in place for a reason.
So I can work with developers on, especially on the west side. The apartments. Um, Jim Wilson's lot and the apartment complex or whatever is going to come on the Petrie side. Um, and then we also have what's coming across from the Piggly Wiggly. In the next few years too. So we do have opportunities, but, um. It gives me a little idea knowing about you guys.
So the idea of, uh. You know. Accessory structure. So that would be on a. Essentially what, what we call some sort of a single family lot, would we have a separate zoning code for that? That, I mean, what, because I don't think you're going to try and do that on a six thousand square foot.
No.
High density lot. You're going to do it, um, you know, a larger lot.
It's probably start with the night, because right now our, our two family lots are ninety-five hundred square. And we have single family lots too that are around that. Forget exactly when it starts up. It's around that nine, eighty-five hundred to ninety-five hundred square foot. So I mean, we could, in a, in updated zoning code, we could spell out that anything above that certain, you know, by right, they could have an accessory structure, accessory, not even structure, but. You know, maybe above the garage, attached garage, you know, mother-in-law or something like that. Obviously, they still have to.
I find that like a concept intriguing to, to investigate. Uh, you know, if you can do it on a larger lot. Maybe you get. There's, there's always an aging population and, and, you know, you can. Bring your parents in to live in that, you know, mother-in-law suite or whatever, as you might need to take care of them and, and as we know, a lot of them are living on fixed incomes and. With inflation and things that it. They. It's reversed. Yeah, they come back home. So, yeah, I guess. So, you know, that's part of.
That's absolutely not true. We can look at that, if you're doing that on a ten thousand square foot lot or a bigger lot. You're not going after the low income. You're going after, because I don't want to house my mom in my house, so I'm building a special. But they, that's what you're looking at. So we're not, that won't be designed for the low income.
Yeah.
It's going to be designed to put. X mile. Which is.
Low income, so we're just talking.
I'm just, we're just talking. Don't think that's not going to get fight in your low income. That's going to fight a different fight than I think you should fight, but don't think that's going to attack that problem that is affordable. Cause that's not, that's going to have a whole different issue.
Well, I, I, you could, you could make the argument maybe that handles the affordable home for. The retired grandma. Type of thing that, you know.
Which I think is great, yeah. Don't think that's tech in your affordability, low income family.
Right.
Issue.
Yeah, that's. So we're in the middle of recodifying our ordinances anyways. So I think, you know, and I know you've already got. The twenty chapters written, but you know, I certainly would be, when, when those come to plan commission, the, the zoning ordinance stuff, I'd. Hope that they, that would include some of those.
Yeah.
Sample ordinances.
Trying to kind of gauge, uh. Your guys' interest or I guess appetite for that kind of stuff. Cause I'm, I can write a million different things in there. You're all going to look at me like I'm crazy and nothing's going to get past us. No point.
We think that every meeting anyway.
So first part, like if, if it's not going to get, if, if, if it's. If there's no appetite for it here, there's no point in you spending all the time like researching the community, what they do, working something in our.
Well, I, I think it's definitely worth looking at because the gift, we have a really.
Other than Budenhoff's, um. Duplexes there, we haven't put much multifamily housing, little or no multifamily housing in until ones on Cold Drive. You know, got there, but, uh, um. Everything is single family residence and like shit, four hundred and nineteen or four hundred or whatever, that's definitely not affordable housing, so.
I just tell. I probably have ideas.
Is any of this going to be income-based?
Or maybe.
Subsidized.
Unless you, if you just want subsidized housing. That's a different.
That's all another app.
That's starting a housing.
Yeah. I don't think we want the chief one to get involved in that.
I think you guys want, want part of this. Thing of affordable housing. And thing, you know, you put it into lower your garage, that's for your grandma, that's one. Kind of thing.
How thing. Put in. And you have to basement apartment in. That's making my housing more affordable. That's making it easier for me to keep paying the mortgage now that, alright. So there's, there's two sides to the affordable part of it, right? So making ordinance that, that limits people from doing makes it more difficult for some. My law, so there's eighty seven hundred square feet, so I can't put anything. You know, so now I have to pay my mortgage card. So what I'm trying to say is, you know, whatever the circumstances sometimes, affordability is just for those who don't have someplace to live in.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah, not for disown housing either, it's right, yeah. Sorry to speak that in a parent. So I guess, yeah. You guys have enough in a direction there or?
I think you give us an idea of where I can start, especially, you know, this is very much an ongoing conversation. I did not want a three hour debate, this was more of a, we're gonna need to start these conversations because we do the comprehensive play. This is it, like, we're gonna have the Wimmy Road development coming soon, like, does it look like thirty percent single family, thirty percent, um, medium, thirty percent high, like, we're gonna need to have some of those kind of conversations, though those are very hot plates, so. No. Just kind of think about that, and especially on the property on the west side. We have tid land, we have across from, um, Piggly Wiggly, we're gonna have commercial and what makes, like, these opportunities are coming.
We have land across from Piggly Wiggly too.
Well, that's gonna be developed here soon. Yeah.
Yes.
Well, annex, yeah. Uh, our land, our land's on the west.
Just the tid part, okay. He's got a question.
Yes.
Um, I would just like to make a comment. Yeah, I would really like to see affordable housing in Belleville. Because there's a lot of us that are retired and twelve hundred dollars. They're gonna retire and twelve hundred dollars is gonna be hard for you to pay a mortgage and your, your drugs you're gonna end up having to take because you're old and you could always crash. And, um, there's a, and your food that's sky high, rent around here is nuts. And it's not even logical, I think everybody's getting greedy. But these new houses are crazy and I know it's because of labor and it's because of the, um, lumber prices, because they're all sky high, because there we go again. Um, I just think it would be really nice in Belleville to get someplace affordable for low, low income people, I doesn't, and I'm not saying don't make it low income, but people that can't afford a four hundred thousand dollar house. There's a bunch of us who are retired that we have to stay in our houses, our two-story old houses, because we can't go out and get affordable housing. I would like a ranch home, but I'm done, I can't get one, I can't afford one, they're crazy. And it would be nice for us older people to have somewhere to go, somewhere to rent, somewhere to live. I don't want to rent, I did that once in my life, I don't do that anymore. But I think Belleville should think about people that can't afford four hundred, three hundred thousand dollar houses. It would be very nice.
That's why we're having this discussion, to figure out what ways there are to get there, because, you know, with a household income of eighty to eighty-eight thousand, you can't even buy a single family house anymore. So, so you have to, you have to be making much more than that, um, and why?
Did you?
No, uh, but, so, so, you know, that's, that's a challenge, I mean, part of it, part of is, is income levels of people and you know, is, is it, does it fall upon the village to, to, uh, you know, compensate for that? So.
Go ahead. Obviously second hers, but a lot of these houses are now being built double size with stairs upstairs. As she points out, a lot of people are getting older and can't use them. You, if you want people to purchase a home and age where they stay where they age, maybe that's another thought to talk about developers, if they're interested in doing any ranch houses. I do need, you know, what takes up more space or lot lines. So.
Be someone would have to probably build a spec home, you know, a developer would have to build a spec home, speculating that someone would buy it, um, at, at their cost, or they build a contract home where someone comes in and says, build this for me to these specs, so.
Um, I don't think we're part of a consortium with Dane, Dane County where you can get access to, uh, community development block grants. And a lot of that stuff, uh, I can give you contact information with people, but they, they help people, uh, stay in their homes. Uh, so they have different grants to complete different projects. We do like a chairlift or, uh, any, uh, uh, wheelchair ramps, any of that kind of stuff, they, they help out with that.
Trying, trying to go get my own ramp.
Oh, I don't know, maybe it didn't like you.
Go ahead, Judy.
That little pop box next to the Boeing Allen Heritage.
Heritage lane?
Yeah, you know, and they're small. And.
Nice.
I want to say the most they paid, or the last time I heard somebody who sold one, it was around a hundred thousand.
Oh, no.
Oh, I don't know.
You must have been a long time.
Quite a while ago.
Yeah, some kind of, yeah, because.
They're really blind for now.
Yeah.
On tour live. You know, one person paid one, one hundred and ninety something, but then it got sold and it was higher than that.
Yeah, like to twenty-five, wasn't it?
Something like that.
Okay, so.
Those are nice though.
Yeah. So some investigation into multi-unit is probably our, our lowest hanging fruit of getting anywhere near something that could be affordable, um. Now. Finding a developer that would want to build something like that is, is another challenge, because they're gonna probably want to build market rate.
Mm-hmm. Well.
We don't know if we don't ask.
And I don't know all the.
Yeah. No, we, we don't have any opportunity zones, we're likely not gonna qualify for any opportunity zones, go far enough away from highway that nobody cares. Um, this is, um, but, yeah, we're, we're tipped out right now, and so unless we close this tip early, we're not gonna be able to do anything until. We have the ability, uh, you know, your development agreement to, to do whatever kind of deal we want to do, but if we use any, any GO debt to try to help incentivize somebody, that'll go against, you know, what we're trying to do with projects and so on and so forth. We got the land that we're, we're hopefully not a done deal, but hopefully picking up in the, the tid area, I mean, that's earmarked for, uh, uh, commercial. Commercial, um, and, and I think that would really be worthwhile now, or there may be a couple of lots out there of that land that might lend well to, to multifamily, maybe. And, you know, there we would have purchased the land with tid funds and we did that specifically so we could incentivize, so maybe there's something we could do there, but, but that's really all we got right now. If you guys wanted to look into a housing authority, would, it would, it would be a thing. Um, and it would, it would, uh, be a little expensive, so.
Okay, so you guys need any other direction, you're good?
At this moment.
All right. Let's see, I gotta refresh my memory, planning commission. Which we did some of the zoning stuff that we talked about tonight. Additional use permits. Oh, we, we, uh, eleven Carl, have we, uh, put on? Rusted a month to help them try to get into compliance. And. All right. Please committee, uh, we'll be getting closer. Finance. Finance, uh, several things, capital budget was the main part of the meeting, a long discussion on the community foundation, which we've already talked about. Some operating budget and possible positions that we're gonna let they add next year, so more to come. Library board. And ad hack committee for the Sugar River. Uh, Jim, uh, reported due to the board in September, so, uh, we had pretty good, uh, participation in the public input meeting last night, or last Tuesday night. Uh, we went from sixty-five people that took the survey to a hundred and eighty-one, so we kind of accomplished our goal to a point there. Uh, we'll be working on a, a draft of the plan at our next meeting. And then our second meeting in August, we'll go to rec or make a recommendation or forward the, forward the plan to the board and then we could decide where it goes from there, so.
I got something.
Go ahead, Deb.
The seniors are having a brought passion, this nineteenth from five to eight. And on September fifth, they're doing a, um, backer tailgate party. Lunch.
Where at, the building or?
No, they're gonna have it alongside between the fitness center and the.
Yeah.
On September fifth from eleven to three.
Gamester.
I know, must be a three, it must be a three thirty.
But they.
I don't know if they'll have game times yet. Man, we hit.
No, they're all seven.
They really?
Yeah. Every game time, they're all.
I figured it must be at three thirty, if they're doing, I trust those fully, yeah. You change those.
Oh, yeah.
Did you say that?
September fifth.
The big game, the prime times, they'll schedule.
A game that day. I believe some announcements, whether low festival went on, it was a great, and seemed like it was pretty successful. Perfect day with Sam.
I see like their work is special.
Yeah, they, I talked to Dave yesterday, that was, uh, this was the first time the festival district was used, so I know he's gonna look at that did to his beer sales at the, you know, that kind of stuff, but I was over there for five hours or so and didn't see anybody, it's a nice leisure thing, I didn't see anybody out of hand.
Damn.
Oh, it was gorgeous.
Potentially park designs, we should really look at making those in community park.
Yeah, I, I guess I've always wondered why he hasn't.
No, no fights or anything, chief?
Uh. There was a really sweet Corvette in front of me.
Well.
It was nice.
I know we want to use, we want to have community park be the venue park, but for the five hundred people that, that is still the nicest park in town for some, an event like that, it's just.
Well, you've got shade.
Yeah, got shade, yeah, that's the, you know, it's a long time to sit out there and, yeah, I, I don't think can lift the village mandates, I don't, as long as that event's happening, he's having up there, so.
Festival district, I think, damn, dark bar did pretty.
Yeah, they did really well yesterday, so.
Yeah.
I, I do want to point out about festival over the weekend, uh, we, there, there was a, a brief power outage of some kind there, and Steve, our young guy, was the kid on call, and we have a support network set up with the other guys, you know, in case he needs something. But Steve handled it all on his own.
Oh, good. Oh, good God, yeah.
Well, we had it, we had it all set up so that if anything actually was wrong, we, we had other people ready to go. But, yeah, it was.
Oh, good for him.
All right.
Wrong.
Coming community events. Believe August tenth is, uh, car show.
Yeah.
When is chicken sales going on?
Uh, probably Wednesday morning, I'll go online, so.
They have a big swastika coming up.
Yeah, the second is the music fest.
Yeah.
And then the eighth, ninth, and tenth is the picnic.
Gosh, that came up fast.
Elections on the nineteenth, I think they'll deliver brats to my election workers at the, let's see here, so.
They did what?
On, on the nineteenth, when they're having their brat bash, will they deliver their food over here to us?
I bet you.
Watch the alley.
We could, uh, we could, uh, get there. We can't leave, we.
Senior helpers can walk through the alley.
Risking. Yeah. I'll, I'll, I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, well. I'm by then, because it's, it's our dinner rush.
Any future agenda items?
Yeah.
All right. Onto closed session, the village, Belleville Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen dot eight five subsection one, subsection C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has ju- jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. And two items, uh, discuss and consider the movement of Curtis Wygle as part-time patrol officer and discuss and consider the assistant administrator's six-month evaluation. I'm going to enter the full session. Second, I'll tell you, our second, Shelley. Just in this, we'll call.
All right, President Zervis.
Yes.
Uh, Jesse Spainan?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yep.
Michael Kraut?
Yes.
Kazmar?
Yes.
Peakler?
Yes.
We are in closed session at seven twenty-five.
All right, we're back.
Right, I would entertain a motion. In this.
I'll make a motion to extend a conditional offer employment to Curtis Whiteall for the position of a part-time police officer. And if he is successful in passing the conditions of employment, they are to be moved to probationary status.
Shelley. Those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Two passes. I would make a motion that we remove the CDL requirement from the offer letter. Through some. Those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Two passes. I would now entertain additional motion.
I make a motion adjourned.
Those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Adjourned at eight oh six.